Good evening. My name is Charkaioven. I'll be presiding over this evening's hearing of the Malden Planning Board on October 10, 2018. We have two items on the agenda this evening. One is a special permit request from 2527 Albion Street, and then the second item is a public meeting, application for approval of preliminary plans of a subdivision, subcontrol law. Before we get started, a couple administrative things to do. For those in attendance, under the provision of the open meeting law, attendees are informed that this meeting is being recorded by MA TV. I have also received notification that private citizen Brian Delacy will also be recording the meeting this evening. The next thing we're going to do is I'd like to ask everyone to identify themselves for the transcription device so that the recorder can pick up your voice. We'll start on the end with Jim Chevelli.
Name? Jim Chevelli.
Tawadaj Gubrasilase, Planning Board.
Patrick Fitzgerald, Planning Board.
Diane Chuha, Planning Board.
Ken Antinucci, Planning Board.
Charkaioven, Planning Board.
Michelle Romero, City Planner.
Eric McCush, Planning Board.
Pat Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Henry Susi, Planning Board.
Charlie Ferguson, Planning Board.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also remind everyone in attendance, board members, please make sure you're speaking into the microphone. And anyone who comes up to speak, whether it be a presenter as a petitioner, or a representative petitioner, or anyone from the public who speaks in favor or in opposition, we ask that you announce your name and address for the record, and then if you step away from the mic and then start talking again, if you could repeat your name so that it gets picked up from the transcription device. Thank you very much. The first item we're going to open up is 2527 Albion Street. So Ken, if you could read the notice. Thank you.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the auditorium on the first floor of the John Christina Markey Malden Senior Community Center, 7 Washington Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 10, 2018, on the petition of 2527 Albion Street LLC for a special permit under Section 700.1.3.1 of Chapter 12, Revised Odenses of 1991, as amended of the City of Malden, to structurally change and extend and a pre-existing non-conforming property and use in the residence a zoning district, namely to construct dormers and additional bedrooms at the existing three-family residential dwelling at the property known as and numbered 2527 Albion Street, Malden, Mass., and also known by City Assessor's parcel ID number 087264410.
Thank you, Ken. I see the petitioner's attorney is present?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Patrick McDonald here this evening on behalf of the petitioner. I have offices at 15 Ferry Street here in Malden. The petitioner is 25-27 Albion Street LLC, and the petition relates to that subject property, 25-27 Albion Street. Preliminary matter, Mr. Chairman, I was asked to appear on behalf of the petitioner for purposes of the hearing, but I was not involved with the original filing of the application or the publication requirement. I just consulted with my client, who indicates that he did publish and that he has tear sheets, but he didn't understand that they needed to be brought to the hearing this evening. I'm assuming that's the case. The board may, I know sometimes the board checks the local paper to see if legal has...
I'll check with Michelle. Thank you for bringing that up.
But to the extent that proof of publication is required, I would ask that in the event the board acts on this favorably, that we be permitted to provide that proof, you know, as soon as tomorrow. It's just a matter of getting the tear sheets at this point in time.
Very good. Thank you. Michelle, do you have the tear sheet already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did verify publication.
So that's okay. You won't need to follow up with anything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing that up.
The board may recall this property and this petitioner was before in June of this year, relative to a petition for a special permit that differs significantly from the one that's before the board tonight. At that time, the petitioner was seeking to convert this property, which is a pre-existing, non-conforming, three-family residence in a Residence A zoning district, to a four-family. The board did not vote in favor of that petition and denied it. The petitioner appears tonight with a significantly revised proposal relative to the development of the property, which we sincerely hope will be more palatable to both the board and the neighborhood. Specifically, this petition seeks to maintain the existing three-family status of the property, but to expand the structure itself, specifically by essentially squaring off the top floor with four full dormers and with interior rehabilitation that will maintain three distinct residential units within, but increase their size and the number of bedrooms. The existing layout of the interior of the structure is a bit odd. I believe the one unit has four bedrooms, another has, the second unit has two, and the third has one. They will be creating much more symmetrical units within the property, each of which will have three bedrooms if permitted to proceed. They'll also be closing off or tearing down an existing open deck at the rear of the property and replacing it with a roofed porch structure. In terms of parking, a plan has been submitted in support of the application, which reflects six parking spaces. It also reflects that the driveway and parking area would be entirely comprised of permeable pavers. In reviewing the planner's recommendation and acknowledging that it seems to value additional parking, if at all possible, I would represent to the board that the petitioners have looked at the various proposals as contained in the planning recommendation, and they would be absolutely amenable if it would make the board more comfortable with going what is referred to in two places as both Option A or Option 3D in the final planning recommendation, that being to, there is an existing garage structure on the property, which if you were to review the existing plan, would be removed, and the space would essentially be considered open space and snow storage area. The planner has recommended, and the petitioners are absolutely amenable to removing the garage, first of all. That's going to come down if they're allowed to proceed no matter what. But rather than have it be simply open space and snow storage, they're more than happy to adopt the recommendation whereby they reduce the size of their existing spaces on the plan slightly, and essentially get two more spaces where their garage area is. As a result of doing that, they would have eight substantially compliant parking spaces on site, at least in terms of size. Admittedly, the layout and aisles are difficult, given the shape and amount of space in the rear, but it's certainly valuable to have the additional parking spaces. So for purposes of hoping to make this a more palatable proposal to the board, they would do that, and in creating eight spaces, they would then render the property zoning compliant for purposes of parking or substantially zoning compliant, certainly in terms of number, with modest deficiencies in terms of the size of the spaces, as well as aisle and width requirements under the code. Their proposal to rehabilitate the property and expand it by squaring it off, as I said, and creating or installing the dormers creates a relatively modest additional dimensional control non-conformance relative to one side yard setback, but it maintains and does not increase or enlarge any of the other existing dimensional control requirements. So we feel that it's not a particularly offensive problem in that respect. For purposes of the legal standard, we'd respectfully suggest that, we believe that the standard is met here. This is, as I said, a pre-existing, non-conforming, three-family. That status is maintained and not changed. They are proposing to, again, completely rehabilitate this property. It is, as I'm sure any board member who has had occasion to personally view or inspect the property, a bit of an eyesore present, and the expectation is that it will be a much better-looking property for the neighborhood once this rehabilitation project is completed. At the time of their previous petition before the board, they had had a, at the request of Ward Counselor O'Malley, they had conducted a neighborhood meeting. It was very well-attended, and a number of concerns were raised, and frankly, several promises were made to neighbors regarding additional conditions that the petitioners would meet if, in fact, they had been granted that special permit. Counselor O'Malley had reached out to me prior to tonight's hearing, wanted to be assured that those promises/conditions would continue to carry forward on this petition, if, in fact, this is ultimately acted favorably upon by the board. I assured him it would. I would recite those to the board at this point in time, as they were recited during the last petition, and they were the following: that the intention here is to create condominiums, so these would presumably be owner-occupied condominium units, not rental apartments in a three-family residential dwelling; that they would instruct and require any and all workmen or contractors who might be involved in the physical rehabilitation of the property, that their trucks and other vehicles would have to be parked on-site during any and all work that was performed, so as not to increase any traffic or parking issues on Albion Street. The rear abutter to the property had requested, and the petitioners had agreed and continue to agree to the creation of basically a buffer zone along the rear property line by planting a certain species, I'm going to mangle the name, Arvenidis or...
Abrivites.
I'm sorry?
Abrivites.
Abrivites, and they are more than willing to do that. And finally, they had represented to those who had appeared at the community meeting and to the ward counselor that at such time as they were to erect and determine the nature of the perimeter fencing that they intend to install on the property, that they would communicate with the affected neighbors to get their input, make sure that they were not putting up some fencing that someone had a major issue with. So all of those promises were made the first time around. They continue to be made this time around, and we would not oppose or object to those being entered if the board acts favorably as additional formal conditions on any special permit that might be granted. And with respect to those conditions that are suggested or recommended by the planner and her recommendation, all of those are acceptable to the petitioners. So with that, we respectfully hope the board acts favorably upon the petition. And the principals of the property owner are present for purposes of addressing any particular questions of board members. I'd also say one last thing. I know the condition of the property and its state of disrepair is, and continues to be problematic for the neighbors. I'm advised that effective tomorrow dumpsters are engaged to be brought on-site for purposes of a significant clean-out of the property, regardless of how the board may act tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Are you going to take us through the planning?
I'm...
Are you going to take us through the plan?
I certainly can, sure.
Or, or how will you proceed? You just want us to ask questions?
However, whatever the board's preference is, I'm more than happy. If the board asks questions, specific questions about aspects of the plan, I can bring the petitioners up here. They're probably more qualified to answer those kind of nuts-and-bolts questions than I am anyway, Mr. Chairman, so again...
Okay. If I could, I, so the petitioner has owned the property since the spring, correct?
Yes, sir.
Name an address for the record, please, and then if you could, answer the question.
Jumanth Rosianturi, 105 Celip Street, Malden, Massachusetts.
Okay, and so...
Residential address?
I don't know. Is that your residential address?
My office, our office.
What is your residential address?
45 Palmer Street, Stonem.
Okay, Palmer Street, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so you purchased it, what month did you purchase it, in May?
June.
June?
Of 2000.
2017.
Of 2017.
So you've owned it for over a year?
Yes.
When, did you ever have any intentions of living at the location?
No, sir, no.
Okay, so it was purchased on spec, basically, for investment property?
Yes, sir.
What is driving adding seven, over 1,700 square feet to the, to the property? Adding those dormers that are being proposed adds over 1,700 square feet, or almost, almost 50% more of what you have right now?
Okay, so the condition of the property right now doesn't allow us to add additional square footage unless we adding dormers on the side of the house. And also, the back of the property currently only has one floor, and half of it is only a one-bedroom. So for us to, to make our investment worthwhile for us to do it, will be adding additional square footage so we can recover our investment. Unfortunately, we pay high price for the property, and for us to justify the additional price when we resell it, you'll be adding additional money.
Okay, so it's economic. The size of this addition, which is, it's fairly substantial at 1,700 square feet...
Right.
...is purely economics-driven to justify the purchase and the renovations that you need to do?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. I have a couple questions about the layout, if I could. There's, the petition is for nine bedrooms, three per unit in the proposal...
Yes.
Though I notice a couple other rooms that, in my mind, could easily flip into an additional bedroom, even though on the plan, they're labeled "family room" and "study", so the Unit 3 family room...
Yes.
...on the second floor...
Yes.
And the, the unit, hold on a second, where is it?
The study on the first floor.
The study on the first floor, okay, okay, I did circle it. Yes, the Unit 3 study, so that three-bedroom unit looks like it could potentially become five bedrooms.
You referring to the backside unit?
Yes.
The third unit?
I can't read this page.
Yeah, sir, this is, this is the first floor. Well, the size of the first floor is quite, is good size, so we feel like having like office, home office for the new order will make it appealing to people who have like their own business, so they can use it as a, you know, home office or a, you know, playroom, whatever, for the family.
Okay, why, why can't you use that in, in the other unit, the family room in the other unit, as bedrooms instead of adding over 1,700 square feet to the, to the building that's already on a subsized lot?
Okay, so the shape of the, the structure, the existing structure, it calls for townhouse style condominiums, like townhouse style units instead of on the top of each other. So the current footprints in the backside of the, of the house is kind of square, so, you know, for us, it makes sense to develop fully the basement, the basement size, like the full size of the backside to the second and third floor to match the height of the front side of the house. Because it's already there, you know, the existing structure is already there, so by adding additional square footage, we feel like it will increase the value of the, of the property and to maximize the best use of the space, rather than only adding another floor, it'll give us the full amount of space that we, we like to have.
Okay. Can you speak to the, the grounds of this, this investment property? I noticed there's permeable pavers, so most, quite a bit of the lot will be covered. We, and I understand you need that so you can access parking in the back.
Right.
I get that, but it's just, what other, what other landscaping do you plan on adding to the lot to kind of make up for the fact that you're paving so much over?
Well, currently, we already have driveway on the property with a two-car garage, so the additional space that requires for this, this parking space will be about, I would say about one-third of the back of the, of the backyard. So the reason why we like to make the, all the driveway permeable paver so that it will absorb water, the run of water, so it doesn't go... absorb water, the runoff water, so it doesn't go all the way to the street. And also, on the plan, it shows that we're gonna have some trees around the property, and also the walkway from the front will have some landscaping on the side of the house. So, it'll have plenty of space for us to do landscaping and a little bit more trees and...
So, those are all trees that are shown on this separate plan? I wasn't sure if they were shrubs or...
Right, right.
Are they trees or are they bushes?
Mostly, I think it's mostly bushes.
Yeah, so you're gonna add almost twenty trees?
Well, I think that they're more, probably more properly characterized as bushes, Mr. Chairman, it may not be advisable to plant that many trees so close to a structure, but yes, it does look like that's the number they plan on doing.
And what will happen in the open space, no storage to the northerly rear portion of the lot?
Well, if this proposal were accepted based on the current plan, Mr. Chairman, then that would have been probably grass and open space and available for snow storage. But, as I mentioned at the outset, given that the planning recommendation thought that increasing parking was ultimately more important, onsite parking, than, I'm reading between the lines, so to speak, but the suggestion was to forego that area as open space and snow storage and convert it into an additional two parking spaces, so...
Ah, okay, so that's where the additional two spots would be?
That's, yes, right, that's basically where the current garage structure is, the garage is coming down either way at this point in time. So, the question is, is this more valuable to the property and to the neighborhood as a snow storage, or is, does it make more sense if it is allowed to go forward to get two more parking spaces on site?
Okay, and that makes sense depending on what parking scheme might get done. But because that isn't in the hash design, does that mean that's gonna be bituminous concrete, or is that also gonna be paver?
Well, I think not having planned to use it as parking when the application was submitted, that's probably a question that needs to be answered here for the board's consideration. So, if I may ask, where the cars are gonna be parked, that was gonna be pavement, asphalt? Or was it going to all be pavers all the way through? You understand what I'm asking?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so it'll be permeable pavers.
All right, so, okay, even where the parking spaces are would be permeable pavers, it just isn't depicted in the kinda crosshatching on the plan, but that would be permeable pavers, basically the entire rear area of the property, except for the buffers along the rear property line and the side property line.
Okay, and a couple, just a couple of last questions on the plot itself. I see a twenty-four inch maple and a thirty inch maple circles for it, but they kinda be, they kinda look like they're in the spots of the ones that were cut down. Is the intention to add a thirty inch maple and a twenty-four inch maple, or is that just recognizing the stumps that are there on the lot?
To the left or to the right?
Ones to the left, ones to the right. Both are on the lot line, so if you go on the northerly lot line, about eighty percent of the way back, it says twenty-four inch maple in the thing, and then if you go diagonally across down to the right, in the snow storage area, there's another, there's a thirty inch maple note.
Right, right. The one on the left is actually, it was removed because the branch is actually touching the neighbor's house, so when the neighbor, when I talk to the neighbor, they say, you know, if you could remove this, so we can, you know, they can save the roof, because it's already pressing to their house. So, we already removed that tree on the left, same thing as the one on the right, because it's all, because they didn't take care of the property so long, so all the...
Okay, no, no, but that's, I wasn't sure if you were replacing them or what you were doing, because when I went there, there were no trees on the lot.
Right, we had to remove...
And now, I see on the plan that there were two trees, so I just wanna clarify that they're gone, and don't plan to replace them.
It may be, Mr. Chairman, as well, and the planner brought this out in the recommendation. I think when this revised plan was made, the architect or engineer who drafted it was building on a previous plan, and the previous plan may, those trees may have been present at that point in time, they may have since been removed, is that's what's happened?
Probably so, yeah.
So, this, the twenty-four inch maple is gone at this point?
Yeah, it's gone, yeah, yeah.
And the one on the other side is gone?
We had to remove it, yeah.
And it is not your intention to replace those with any new plantings?
No.
Okay. The last thing I'd like to ask is, what's the timeline? If this were to go forward, how long would it take you to complete the renovation?
I spoke with my clients, they, their projected timeframe for completion of the project would be spring of next year, hopefully in the April or perhaps May area.
Does anyone else have any other questions for the petitioner? Michelle, go ahead.
Did you state that you will agree to have them owner occupied condominiums?
Well, we would agree to, it's going to be a condominium conversion, but we couldn't, I think this issue came up last time, we can't guarantee selling a condominium on the open market that once it's purchased by someone that they will live in it forever. I mean, that's an unrealistic expectation. I'm not even sure that you can include a restriction like that in your condominium documents, and if you did, I would, I suspect it would severely affect the actual marketability. Our assumption is that someone buying a three bedroom condominium is most likely buying it for their own personal use, but again, I don't wanna lead the board astray in any way, we can't guarantee that once these units are created and sold, that they will forever be owner occupied, that it may very well be that someone who owns them does rent them out at some point in time.
So, but you would agree that they be developed and sold as condominiums?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
You just wouldn't agree to, that they be maintained as owner occupied?
Yeah.
So, you agree to develop and sell them as condominiums?
Yes, absolutely, that's the plan, is to convert the three, the existing three family into a three unit condominium, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I missed that part of your presentation.
That was one of the promises to the...
So, you're just totally flipping this, you have no intention of holding the property at all, you're just looking to flip it and get out?
Correct.
Okay.
My other comment or question was, the recommendation, and this is for the board's reference, we can get to this when we go through the details, there were two different ideas. One is to provide more onsite parking, the other was to provide, was to reduce the amount of space used for parking. So, I gave you two different scenarios, because I'm not sure which, you know, the board is gonna consider the priority, based on, you know, what you hear at the public hearing, so I just wanted to let you know that for the record. I wasn't stating one way or the other, there were two, two different sets of scenarios. One is to create more parking, one is to reduce the amount paved or used for parking and access by shifting the parking, and having one continuous area of open space. So, there's two different scenarios, there's some details in here, but just to be clear, I wasn't recommending one or the other. And, but I was recommending both for your consideration. The only other question I had had to do with the cleanup. You stated that you would clean this property up even if you don't get the special permit?
That's correct.
Okay, but I think you had stated that last time, too.
No, we maintain the property in a good shape, but also people came by and then dumped their stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it is noticeably cleaner than it was in June, but it, there's still a lot of overgrowth, there's a lot of broken fencing and debris, there's a pile of construction debris, and I think I had mentioned that last time, that it's certainly a candidate for, honestly, the problem property unit, and I'm pretty sure I did mention that last time, so it never was reported, because I think you were trying to pursue this, but I hope this time you really, you know, you really do clean it up, because whether you get the permit or not, that, you know, you do seriously do that, because it is...
No, actually...
You know, even with the doors, you know, you have the entrances blocked with old doors and, you know, there's broken windows, there's a lot, a lot still going on at the property.
Right, so...
That needs attention.
We actually have, we have to do it this month, whether we have it as a...
Right, because it's in violation of several different ordinances, right now, you know, even without the permit, it's, okay, all right, thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question, I'm looking at, on the plans, EX-1-2, and I'm curious as to what property is actually being represented here, is it 2527 Avian, or as the paper, as the sheet says, is this Eighteenth Spring Street in Malden?
Forgive me, Mr. Henry, what page of the plans?
EX-1.2.
Oh, yeah, the title is wrong, yeah.
See here?
Oh, it's a typo, I think. This is Albion Street.
So, the depiction is of the Albion Street property, Mr. Henry, but it looks like the preparer of the plan, the architect, put the wrong address on that.
Thank you.
Eric McCush. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the assumption of eight parking spaces going in and three units, would there be deeded parking for each unit?
I would recommend that.
This and this and this?
Yeah, so they're gonna have to distribute the parking spaces ultimately unevenly among the three units, because you don't have a number divisible by three, but I envision three, three, and two as a practical way to do it, so one unit will have three, a second will have three, and the third unit may only have two parking spaces. But they will, they will have, if not deeded exclusively, it could either be by way of deed or what's referred to as exclusive easement rights, so they'll be depicted on the condominium site plan, parking space one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and Unit One may have exclusive easement rights to spaces one, two, and three, as opposed to a separate deed for the parking space. A lot of condominiums have done that in the past, but many just use exclusive use easements, basically. But either way, each unit will have exclusive rights to use assigned parking spaces on whatever the site plan depicts for them. The problem with deeded parking spaces is that if you have a separately deeded parking space, you might be able to transfer the deed to another party, and a lot of condominium developments, especially a smaller one like this, you don't want people shifting parking or selling someone across the street a parking space, which they might ultimately be able to do under those circumstances. So, my recommendation, I don't know if I'm gonna be doing the condominium version for the client, but my recommendation would be exclusive use easements for assigned parking spaces in the property.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ken Intenucci.
Can you, do you have any additional detail on the grass, it's listed here, grass driveway with permeable pavers. What kind of material that's gonna be, I mean, have you discussed this with a builder or anything?
Yes, we have a couple of options, we have granite, like six by six, maybe by eight inches deep, also paver, like brick paver, that can be used for driveway.
Okay, but where, it says grass driveway with permeable pavers, I mean, in the way it's hash marked here, what is the paver and what is the grass?
Slash permeable paver, so grass driveway slash permeable paver. So, I guess last time, we were concerned about the water runoff to the street, so by creating this permeable paver, you know, will absorb the water more than if it was a hot tub.
Yeah, no, definitely, you know, I mean, I think that's the goal, but I'm just curious as to the type, whether it's actually gonna be more of a paver, and if you're looking at this drawing, if the lines are actually gonna be the space between the pavers, or there's actually pavers that, it's like a plastic frame or a concrete frame that allows you to have the grass grow within it?
Yeah, yeah, like patio, yeah, well, it'd be more like a patio, you know, the material for patio.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so it's gonna be like a...
Grass may grow in there.
So, it'll be like a concrete paver, and the space around will allow the water to infiltrate, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the petitioner? Any other questions? Counselor, do you have anything else you'd like to present?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll take anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition. Anyone in favor?
Hello, my name is Ryan O'Malley, Ward Four City Councilor, 706 Main Street. As was stated, we did have a community meeting prior to the four unit proposal. As I stated last time, the neighborhood was in support of that proposal then. This time around, the conversations that I've had have also generated a statement of support, but there have been some concerns, many of which were covered by the petitioner tonight, but I will recover them now for thoroughness. There was a concern about the number of bedrooms, and as the chair mentioned, there is, I believe, potential for non-bedrooms to be used as bedrooms. If this body deems that the layout should be changed, minor modifications to prohibit that, whether it's taking down a superficial wall to make a larger living space, that's your call, I think that you guys are the most prepared, as well as the petitioner, to make sure that the bedrooms are used as bedrooms and the other rooms are used as the rooms that they're being proposed as. Parking was another concern, as you heard, the petitioner is willing to increase the number of parking spots on the property. I would also urge that there be a condition that require them to be deeded. The owner occupied nature of this property is one of the main drivers for support, not only by the neighborhood, but also by myself. I believe that encouraging owner occupied properties is how we will really help build the fabric of our community here in Malden. I think that this project will do that, and that they have promised that they will be condos. The condition of the property, as was stated, is not the best, it's better than it was the last time we were here, but it should be improved, and I believe that the petitioner will do that further, whether or not this is granted tonight. As was also stated, there were various promises made to the neighbors, as well as myself, about the condition of the property after a revamp or rehab of the building, the plants in the back, stockade fencing or whatever, a quality, high quality wooden fence around the perimeter to make sure that it is uniform and high quality and will last a long time. I will leave it up to the body to determine what type of fence that would be. The permeable pavers, I also would like to make sure that we have some type of spec on that, so maybe there's a condition that it is per the approval of the building inspector to make sure that the pavers are gonna be high quality and not just a concrete one that could fall apart after, you know, a few applications of salt. I would also like to state that as part of that driveway, I think there should be a base of gravel to allow for the actual stormwater to absorb into, so if that's a condition, it would be up to the planning board to make that. Finally, last time we spoke, there was an agreement, or I would ask if there could be approval of a landscaping plan by the city councilor of the ward, that would be myself, just to make sure that what's going in there is also high quality and is going to improve the property values of the neighborhood, as well as the parcel itself. So, again, in support, but with the conditions that were just stated, I do support the proposals that the city planner has put forward, and I look forward to hearing the discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
The, as I listen to the...
Name an address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jack Rivers... Oh, I'm sorry. Jack Rivers, eighty Central Avenue, Malden. Um, and, uh, I'm here to speak, uh, and my primary concern, I am not a, uh, I do not live in that, this particular neighborhood, but, uh, in general, I'm very much concerned about the, uh, uh, flood control as I've emailed most everybody I know or know of. And, um, the, um.
Uh, Mr. Rivers, I'll give you a little latitude, but if you could confine it.
I will confine it very quickly.
If you could confine it to speaking in favor of twenty-five, twenty-seven Albion, that'd be great.
I have, um, as, as, uh, Mr. McDonald, uh, presented, it, it, uh, looks like a, a very good project that would be a, a credit, and private ownership is much more valuable. Uh, and people take better care of their properties when they own it than when they rent it. Uh, and that's a basic, uh, plus for this particular property. Uh, my, my only point is, we should look at the, the, um, increased impervious area if, in fact, there is a net increase from the status quo to the post-construction. Uh, it seems to me as though there's a roofed over open porch. It's an open porch now, as I understand it, and it would be roofed over, ergo, creating impervious area, uh, and, and increasing the runoff. Uh, I have some concern about the pavers, the standard, there are many, uh, permeable pavers, uh, that exist in the market, and, uh, uh, some of them call them permeable and some of them aren't. Uh, and ju- we should have a specification to, uh, address just what kind of pavers they are. Also, uh, I know that the neighborhood is, uh, concerned about, uh, parking, uh, and additional parking, and, uh, I think that the open space that is depicted on the plan should remain open space and to be grassed, and there is precious little, uh, uh, grass on the site. Uh, beyond that, I have, uh, no particular issue. It, it should also be asked where the drainage goes to. Does it drain out to the Malden River, we, where we have a minimal, uh, concern on the, uh, impact of the runoff, or does it go towards the, uh, uh, Spring River, uh, out towards the, uh, Romney Marsh? Uh, and, uh, those are just, uh, my basic issues, and I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Frances Waltman, fifteen Albion Street, and I am in favor of the petition. Um, as to some of your concerns about bedrooms, this was, to my understanding, the original farmhouse for the area. The rooms are small and catty-cornered, and there's literally no closet space in most of them. So for them to add these other rooms and add the amenities that people now need, um, I think that's a really good thing, and I think it's a good selling point for them, but I think it's going to make those people who are buying it a whole lot more anxious to move into something like that than if they're in these little rooms with no closets where they've gotta bring in some kind of wardrobe or something to deal with that. Everybody has too many clothes and not enough closets. So I think that, uh, this, what they have proposed is a really good thing and would be good for the neighborhood, as long as you have the, uh, the parking in the back. Parking on Albion Street is horrific. So that's, uh, I am in favor of the project.
Thank you. Yes, anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Hi, um, I live at, uh, Eric Yaffe, I live at twenty Holden Street. My property, uh, in the backyard is the backyard of the property in question. I guess you could, I am in favor with sort of, I guess you could say, reservations. Um, I do want the property to look nice. It, it, I moved into Malden three years ago and, uh, is sort of deteriorated a lot in the last, especially since it got sold. It just, they've basically ripped down all the trees. There, it used to be a back, and wouldn't say a well cared for, but it used to be a backyard, uh, with lots of trees. They were all ripped out. And now, so it really never was a full driveway. That's, I just want ever to be full transparency about that. Um, uh, I'm concerned about renters, like the recent house, two doors down from me, was, uh, there was, I don't know if it was owner occupied, but they recently sold a year or two ago. New renters have moved in, have totally trashed the place. They put, um, they paved over the front yard. I mean, my, my concern is gonna be like nine new or ten new, um, renters. Uh, I know it's gonna be condos hopefully, but my concern would be that if there are renters, it would, who knows what will happen to the property? But I, I am in favor, 'cause I do want it to look nice. The, if, if, if the plan is according to the plan, I think it could look nice. Um, I'm, I, part of me, though, doesn't know if I can trust the, 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 the contractors. Um, since the last meeting, um, they said they were gonna clean it up. All they really did was move all the trash that was in the front to the back, which is my backyard. So every time I look out my window or go in the backyard, I see a big mound of trash. Um, so are they really gonna do what they say they're gonna do? I don't know. That, that, that's what concerns me. I, the snow storage, so again, because my backyard is, is the backyard, um, if there's eight parking spots, um, my concern would be, uh, is where would the snow go? Uh, I understand there's, there's also, you know, a need for parking spots if, if there are this many bedrooms. Um, I don't know if there can still be six parking spots, two deeded for each unit, and if it's a family that moves in, they'll need two cars, and that's the way it is. Um, that would probably be the best scenario, is you have six parking spots, you still have the snow storage. But the reality is, uh, you know, maybe there'd be more renters that move in or more, more roommates or whatever. Um, and I would, I'm not a lawyer, but I thought the condo docs, documents, when I used to live in condo, can have requirements that a certain percentage be owner occupied, not that every unit be owner occupied. So I don't know if that's something that can be done or not. So I definitely want the place to look nice. It's a dump. Um, the backyard's a dump. Um, the current people who own it haven't really done much. Um, so I'm hoping that they'll live up to the promise and, and, and make it look nice in whatever way. I trust you guys know a lot more about how to, how to make the city look good, and I think the plan, according to what they say they're gonna do, will look nice, but to the extent you need to cover yourself and make sure that if they don't do what they say, um, there's repercussions, that would probably be good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Uh, in favor, I'm sorry. Anyone else to speak in favor? Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
No.
No one else in favor? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone speak in opposition? Michelle, do you have anything to read in opposition?
Yes. I have an email dated October seventh, two thousand and eighteen. It reads, Dear Miss Michelle Romero, City Planner and Counselor O'Malley, thank you for sending out information about the projected changes for twenty-five dash twenty-seven Albion Street. I'm not in favor of adding the additional bedrooms to this property. I am an owner occupied, three-family resident, who has lived on Albion Street for the past twenty years. My rents are considered low income, and I have never raised my rent since each of my tenants have moved in. Since purchasing my house, many changes have dramatically affected the dynamics of this small neighborhood. The biggest change has been in, been the eliminated, elimination of parking for residents. One, the majority of the multi-family are no longer owner occupied, which has increased the number of cars parking on Albion Street. Two, number twelve Albion Street was changed from a single-family to a residential housing with up to three workers and additional visitors who park on the street. Three, all parking was eliminated on Dana Street. Four, small parking lot at the end of Dana Street was taken for the skating rink. Five, many of the houses have elongated driveways and residents park on the street. Six, it is unenforceable by the city when residents park on the street and not in the elongated driveways. Seven, Albion Street is one-sided parking only. Eight, one oh five Salem Street was changed from residential to business and eliminated several public spaces on Albion Street as the result of curb cutting for the business parking lot. If the city allows the additional bedrooms as requested, it will cause anarchy for parking on Albion Street. The parking is a very stressful issue on our street and will almost be impossible in the winter. The decision will greatly impact those of us that own property and live on the street. I have no issue with the transformation of the property to a three-family condo. I do, however, object strongly to the additional bedrooms for the property. I respectfully request that the city not allow the special permit to change this property and follow the ordinances that are in place. I respectfully request you advocate for our small little street. Sincerely signed Margaret McDonald, thirty-six dash thirty-eight Albion Street, Malden, Mass.
Thank you, Michelle. Anything else to read in opposition?
No.
Last call, anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Um, Michelle, do you have anything to read in general?
No.
Very good, then. Can you take us through your staff report?
Yes. The property is the site of a two-and-a-half-story, three-family dwelling and a two-car accessory garage. It's vacant right now, the, the dwelling. Um, and we mentioned the property's in a state of disrepair. There's construction debris in the rear yard, overgrown vegetation, missing and broken sections of fencing, broken windows, and two sets of blocked or covered stairs. Um, as you heard about, the proposal is to add two new bedrooms, structurally change and extend the existing building by constructing four-fold dormers to expand the existing half-story, the top floor, to a full-third story. There's also a proposed enlargement of the existing landing stairs to construct a new roof porch. That's, um, in the southern, southeastern corner of the building. Um, so on the right side of the building, when you're looking at the plan. That would include stairs, um, that's on the first floor. The proposal also includes removing the second-story open deck with staircase and landing at the rear of the building. Removal of the garage, we heard about, and we heard about creating the parking lot at the, in the rear yard. And I've given you the breakdown of the interior, um, of the existing unit layouts and of the renovations. This is based on the plans that were submitted. Um, so you have the three units, unit one, two, and three. I've given you the existing location, the existing size, the existing number of bedrooms, total, um, square footage, um, total number of bedrooms. Currently is three thousand seven hundred nineteen square feet and seven bedrooms. Then you have the proposed, um, locations of the three units and new sizes. Um, total square footage is five thousand four hundred thirty-five square feet. Total number of bedrooms is nine. So that is an overall increase of approximately forty-six percent square footage and twenty-nine percent in bedrooms. Um, the plans you have in front of you are called proposed renovations to twenty-five dash twenty-seven Albion Street, Malden, Mass, the date of July thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, prepared by Feng Forzio Studio of Architecture in Dorchester, Mass. You also have a site plan that's called Site Plan at twenty-five dash twenty-seven Albion Street, Malden, Mass, dated October twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, prepared by Robert A. Junior, Pete Professional Land Surveyor, Westgate Associates, Kingston, Mass. You can see, as noted here, this is the same, this is a different site plan from the one that was submitted with the prior petition that was disapproved in case eighteen oh six, but it has the same date as that plan. It also has the same date as a site plan that was submitted with the plans. So just to make sure everybody is looking at the correct plan, it's the individual plan that was handed out separately, that has landscaping, um, and some additional information on it. The plan that's part of the package doesn't have all the same information, even though it's got the same date and title. So just make sure you're looking at that current plan. Um, the property's located in the residency zoning district. The three-family use is pre-existing non-conforming use. It's prohibited in this district. It began sometime before nineteen sixty. The proposed extension may be allowed by special permit. Um, the petitioner did reference a prior petition. This board denied a petition to convert the propo- property to a four-family dwelling in June of this year. That was in case eighteen oh six. You have a copy of that decision for your reference, um, attached behind the staff report. Um, the director butter to the north is a two-family dwelling. To the south is a single-family dwelling and a four-family dwelling. To the west, single-family dwellings. To the east, on the other side of Albion Street, are single-family dwellings. Surrounding land uses are residential dwellings, Malden High School, Malden Valley Forum, ice rink, arena, and the Bike to the Sea Trail, located on the abandoned railroad right away. Salem Street Cemetery and offices on Salem Street are also surrounding land uses. In terms of diren- dimensional controls, the building was constructed before nineteen twenty-eight. The building on the property grossly violates most dimensional controls. It's considered pre-existing non-conforming. Um, I've given you the breakdown here of the different, um, non-conformities. Lot area is an existing non-conformity. Um, front yard setback is an existing non-conformity. There's an existing side yard setback. Um, I'm sorry, there's no existing side yard setback non-conformity. Um, rear yard setback, there's no non-conformity. Open spaces, no non-conformity. And, um, density, there is an existing non-conformity. So the proposal does create, I'm sorry, there's also building cover, there's no building coverage violation and no violation of the height requirements. So the proposal creates one new violation of one yet side yard setback. That's where that new side porch is going. Um, so that creates a twenty percent yard setback. It maintains all the other non-conformities, which again, are pre-existing non-conforming, um, violations of lot area, the front yard setback, and density. Those are the three that are existing. Um, the proposal maintains those and again, creates one new violation of side yard setback. In terms of parking, the three-family use requires a total of six spaces. That's two per dwelling unit. That's under applicable zoning, which is no longer in effect for new projects. Um, so it's exempt from the current ordinance that requires one parking space per bedroom. Currently, there does appear to be parking for five to six vehicles in a pre-existing non-conforming layout, namely two in the garage and three to four single file in the existing driveway. The proposal requires an additional two parking spaces or one space per new bedroom. So under the proposal, it requires a total of eight parking spaces, six for the existing three-family and two for the additional bedrooms, new bedrooms. Um, the proposed site plan does depict a non-conforming parking layout. Um, I've given you a description of the non-conformities. There are deficiencies, um, new deficiencies in terms of the parking aisle for circulation and the amount of paving and landscaping of yard areas. The width of the driveway is a pre-existing non-conforming, um, deficiency. We heard about this grass driveway, um, I said with permeable pavers, I guess the petitioner said it's grass driveway slash permeable pavers. Um, so the, one of the recommendations is that all parking and driveway surfaces be constructed with permeable pavers, but I think we need to speak about that, um, to figure out what the specs are gonna be on that. Um, but as proposed, extending the driveway and adding the parking spaces, nearly the entire rear yard of the property will be used for parking and access. Um, so I've given you a couple of recommendations for consideration to modify the proposed site plan and the parking layout. One would be to increase the onsite parking to eight spaces. Um, the parking spaces that they're showing are oversized, so you could reduce the size of the parking space and still install the six spaces. Um, one option would be to maintain the garage, which provides two parking spaces, and then leave the six as laid out. They've stated that they wanna demolish the garage. So that would be looking then at, um, uh, option two, which would be to install two additional parking spaces in the location of the garage. Um, so you'd have the six that are shown on the plan, and then you'd add two more, um, in the space that's labeled open space, snow storage. Um, the other option would be to provide six onsite parking spaces, but reduce the amount of rear yard cover to use for parking and access. So again, you could reduce this oversized parking spaces. Uh, by reducing them to the required size, eight-and-a-half by seventeen, you would reduce the amount of surface area from one thousand twenty square feet to eight hundred sixty-seven square feet. Again, if you maintain the garage and eliminated the two southernmost parking spaces, they said that they're gonna demolish it, so that's not an option, or you could relocate the two southeastern spaces to the northeastern. So the location of the existing garage that's gonna be demolished, put the two spaces there. Then you could landscape the entire southern yard, so from the front property line to the rear property line, that whole side yard could. the rear property line, that whole side yard could be open space. Again, that would be if you want to just go with the six spaces. I'm not sure which, again, is a priority. Is it to provide the additional parking or the additional open space? They don't violate open space under the proposal or currently. They don't violate the open space requirements, they're in compliance. So the finding to grant a special permit, you must find that the proposal's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do you want to go through with the questions?
Yes, unless someone has questions for what Michelle's read so far. Patrick Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michelle, preliminarily, why is this not considered to be a repetitive petition requiring our consent before it goes forward? Is it because it's not, they're not proposing a four-family, they're maintaining a three?
That's correct. That's correct. So on its face, it's a different petition. It's not to convert a three-family to a four-family, it's to expand a three-family.
Okay.
So it was, there was no need for you to make that determination because on its face, it's a different petition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle? Okay, Michelle, please take us through your recommendations.
So provided that you can make those, that required finding, that the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, the recommendation to the special permit be granted subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans except as modified by these conditions. Two, the maximum number of bedrooms in each unit is three. I have some additional, but I'll put those in at the end as opposed to trying to put them in now. So three, submit a revised site plan with a revised parking layout. All parking spaces shall be eight-and-a-half by 17 feet. And then I would suggest you choose either A, install six parking spaces onsite as per plan and demolish garage. Or B, install six parking spaces onsite as per plan, except eliminate two spaces at southeastern corner and add two spaces at northeastern corner. The garage location must be demolished and reduce driveway surface area to extend to the last space. So that surface area would end at that sixth spot. C is not an option. It involves maintaining the garage, so I won't even read that. The other option would be D, install eight parking spaces onsite, six as per plan and two in the garage location. Garage must be demolished. E, again, contemplates maintaining the garage. If you're going to go with 3B or three, if you're going to go with 3B, then you would want to make sure that the entire, you'd have condition four, maintain entire southern side yard from front to rear property line is landscaped open space. If you're not choosing 3B, then that's only, four will only have application if you chose 3B because you'd be shifting all the parking to the northern side of the lot, so that area would be open. And you would, I would recommend you have that landscaped. I don't know if you want to talk about that now, or you want me to read through the rest of them?
Please read through the rest of them.
Okay.
Depending on which, where it ends up going, then we'll explore that.
Okay, so five, all new parking and driveway surfaces shall be constructed with permeable pavers. I recommend that you add a condition that says, or you add a, you amend that to say per specifications, and I would ideally have those specifications, but I don't. You could have it subject to the building commissioner or the city engineer in terms of specifications and drainage, unless somebody on the board knows, and when we get to that, has a specific way to phrase that. But, you know, I do have a concern that they are, you know, obviously, we heard high quality, that they really are permeable and that they're going to be, you know, what we think. So we need to add something to five. Six, install privacy fencing. You may want to specify wood or vinyl, or not. Install privacy fencing and/or replace, repair, replace existing fencing and install screening slats along northern, eastern, and southern property lines. Or you could just require all privacy fencing, so it'll all be consistent and look the same. Right now, there's portions of chain length, there's portions of wooden fencing. So that needs to, you need to figure out what you want to do with that. Do you want to just say install privacy, new privacy fencing around all three, so that it'll be matched, it'll be consistent? You may want to do that. Then I also have recommendations for several others. Seven would be onsite parking shall be for the exclusive use of residents. I didn't say anything about the deed, I'm not sure if you want to say deeded. I, you know, would have a concern if they're not going to be used by the residents, they're going to be leased out or rented or, you know, not for the use of the residents. I thought that might cover it. Then I would also recommend a condition. Eight, plant and maintain arborvitae along the rear property line, which grow to six to eight feet in height. I think we should specify that because I think there's different types. Eight, all three units shall be developed and sold as condominiums. I'm sorry, that's nine. Ten, all construction workers, laborers must park onsite. And I'll just mention at this point, you know, someone asked about enforcement. We're only going to be able to enforce that is if we get a complaint that says there are construction workers working on the job that are parking on the street. They were allowed to park on the street because it's a public street. But we would then have to go down, you know, the building commissioner inspector will go down there, compliance, and cite the owner. First, they get a warning, then they say, you're not in compliance with your decision. So just so everyone understands that, how it would work. It wouldn't be anything through the parking department or anything else. It would be regulation under the special permit, we would try to get enforced restriction. And then 11, landscape the site in accordance with the plan, subject to reasonable approval of the ward city councilor. I think that that is reasonable considering we don't have a lot of details on this landscape plan, unless you want to wait to see an actual detailed landscape plan that lists the types of plantings and, you know, what we've seen on some other petitions really specifies. If not, I think that that's reasonable for you to require it be landscaped, but allow it to be subject to the reasonable approval of the ward city councilor. And I think that was everything I had.
Okay, Patrick Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michelle, if they were to, and I think there was a representation by the petitioner that they would be amenable to recommendation 3D, demolishing the garage and adding two additional parking spaces in that location for a total of eight. Because it was a, it is a garage, if they were to do that, that wouldn't create any violation of open space, would it?
No, what's required for open space is a total of 1,500 square feet. That's what's required. So 500 square feet per unit. They're showing 2,318 square feet. And I believe the garage, I have it someplace what the dimensions are. So as long as it's, you know, it adds, as long as they can still provide the 1,500 square feet, I think that...
But if the garage was not considered as part of that 2,000, then it's not going to impact the...
Well, it was considered. They showed it on their plan as open space. So that was an area 18 by 26. I believe that that was part of it. Maybe you need to clarify that. There is an open space total here, 2,318. I thought it did include that, but maybe you want to clarify that, that 2,000, 2,318 includes that. I do have here someplace, I thought I had a, dimensions of the garage someplace here. Well, how much? 450? Did you, you just added that, or you did it based on this? Okay. So, let me just see something right here. So 450...
Still the 1,900 square feet remaining.
So, okay, so 18, let me just see one thing here. Yeah, and I mean, I would say that's probably right. I mean, two parking spaces, eight-and-a-half by 17, that's about 290 square feet. That's, so I would say that's right. So yeah, they would still have the open space.
Okay, thank you.
They wouldn't have the 2,318, 2,300, or they might. Again, I'm not 100% sure if that was included or not. I thought that it was.
But it seems like it would definitely be more than the 1,500 required.
It does. I would say it does. So that won't, that wouldn't affect that. You may want to, you know, you may want to see, I don't think I put that in there. You may want to see, I did say, submit a revised site plan. So you, you know, we're going to want to have something on file so that going forward, we know what it's supposed to look like. I think that you'll, there'll be some smaller yard area as well on the side because if you reduce those parking spaces, you gain, what, six times three, you gain another 18 feet by reducing them to 17 feet wide in width. So you'll, you'll gain a little bit more.
One space, yeah.
Yeah. Oh yeah, you will, right. So, good point, so.
Okay. Patrick, is that it? Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle, I just have a question with regards to the proposed recommendation, I think you said number 11, about the landscaping and it, the petitioner coordinating with the city councilor. What is the procedure, procedurally? What recourse does this, do we have or the councilor have if for some reason the petitioner vision is not in line with the councilor's vision with regards to this landscaping?
Well, if they can't, you know, if, if they can't come to an agreement, if that's what you're suggesting, they wouldn't be in compliance with that condition, so they wouldn't be able to get an occupancy permit. So they're going to have to comply with that condition or come back to the board to modify the condition.
So does the councilor file this petition, or how does that?
I would think the petitioner would file it because he wants an occupancy permit. So we'll be, when, when we go to do the sign-offs for the occupancy, you know, the building commissioner runs through the, the conditions, checks with me, you know, sees if we have everything in order. And if we get to that and we don't have a plan that's been approved, you know, again, subject to reasonable approval, then that'll be a concern, so. Though, I would think that they will come back to try to amend that. At that point, I would honestly recommend that they bring a full landscaping plan back to this board so that you can approve it. This is, you know, an option so that you don't table it tonight to get that landscaping plan that's trying to give them some flexibility.
Thank you.
Is that it, Eric?
Yes.
Ken Antinucci.
Okay, Michelle, I just have some language for number five.
Okay.
The parking driveway surfaces.
Okay.
So after your statement, so a new parking and driveway surf, all new parking and driveway surfaces shall be constructed with permeable pavers. Then if you want to add rated for parking in vehicle traffic.
Rated?
Yeah, rated for parking in vehicle traffic, because there are pavers that aren't rated for vehicles.
Okay. And that will be the proper specification?
Well, I'm not, I've got additional.
Okay, sorry.
So per approval of the building commissioner. And meeting section 300.9.2.1.
Which is...
Which is, I can read it if you like. It states, "All surfaces used or intended for the use of wheeled vehicles shall be paved with an all-weather dust-free pavement."
Okay. I'm not sure what version you have, so I want to make sure I have the right version. Or, you know what, better yet, we'll just write, we'll just write that. And...
June of 17.
It's June of 17. June 30, 2017.
Okay. Okay, I was looking at the wrong one. Okay, so that, that's a requirement for off-site, off-street parking lots. So just so that there's no confusion, because they're not actually subject to that section, let's just write what you want, wanted to say. Shall be paved with an all-weather dust-free pavement? But isn't that contrary to the permeable pavers?
No. That, so that is just for parking, off-street parking lots?
That, those are requirements for off-site, off-street parking lots, so that's a standalone lot. So I don't have a problem adding language to it, but I don't want to refer back to a section that...
Inapplicable.
That doesn't apply and then...
Okay, yeah, no, then, then leave it out. Because the other, the other portions, the rating, rated for parking in vehicle traffic per approval of the building commissioner should cover everything.
Okay, there is, and I'm just going to mention this since you brought that section up, there's another section that actually says 500.2.5. Pavements, "All areas subject to wheeled or pedestrian traffic and parking shall be adequately drained and paved with bituminous concrete equivalent surfacing shall be clearly marked, provided with appropriate wheel guards, railings, bumper guards, and shall be permanently maintained." The only problem with using that is we don't want them to do the, the concrete.
Yeah, that's why I didn't...
So, you want to just leave it to the building commissioner?
Yep.
Okay, but let me just bring this up. The way I wrote this was new parking in driveway surfaces. Technically, that driveway already exists. So do you want all parking in driveway to be permeable pavers, which means that existing driveway needs to be permeable too?
Well, that's what the plan shows.
Okay, so I'm going to change that to say all parking in driveway surfaces...
Yes.
Shall be constructed with permeable pavers, rated for parking in vehicle traffic.
Per approval of the building commissioner.
Okay, per approval of building commissioner. Or we'll say, and subject to approval of building commissioner, okay?
Okay.
Subject to reasonable approval, just so we don't get in trouble. Okay. Anything about the fencing, anybody?
Actually, for number six, so you state here, install privacy fencing and/or, so it's install privacy fencing, I just want to make sure I understand it. That would be all new privacy fencing, or...
If you take, if you take that out, right. I'm suggesting maybe you want to take it out if you want it to look consistent, that it's not mish, mishmash.
Well, that's, that's what I was wondering. So is this install privacy fencing standalone from and/or repair, replace existing fencing?
No, you have to, you should choose if you want it to be install privacy fencing. You should, we'll delete that and repair or replace. So it'll say install privacy fencing along northern, eastern, and southern property lines.
Okay. So are you going to, are you going to...
That eliminates their option to fix the chain link fence.
So do you need me to give, ask you to strike that, or is that already stricken? The part about repair, replace existing fencing?
Well, you can, you can, I was asking also, did you want to specify wood or vinyl? If the board does...
I, I don't know that, I don't want to specify it, but I mean, I would install, I would just stop it after install privacy fencing, strike and/or repair, replace existing fencing.
So the new condition would be install privacy fencing along northern, eastern, and southern property lines, period? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I would say, yeah.
All right, no, I'm writing these down as amendments. If somebody makes a motion, they may want to, you know, look at these unless that's what you're doing, I don't know.
Is that it, Ken?
Yes.
Counselor?
If I may, while you're on the topic, my preference, I think the neighborhood's preference would be something that's durable. So if we want to specify, you know, like a cedar fence, I think that if you, they do like pine, pine weathers really quickly. If they do like a plastic white fence, that could crack very easily. Something that's durable, I think stating like a cedar fence would be good. We talked about the, the buffer in the back because you're reducing the parking, the length of the parking spots from 20 to 17. I'd rather than increasing... I'd, I'd rather than increasing the, the amount of the, the driveway, it would be better to add that three feet to the, the buffer. So it's a six-feet buffer in the back. Just wanted to state those two things.
Thank you.
So do, is anybody, you want to write that in? Are you, is anybody they want to add a condition that increases the buffer?
Yeah, we should add in, we should, we should add in that, that the, increase the buffer to, would that be six feet around?
Yeah, so condition eight, which was plant and maintain arborvitae along the rear property line, which grows six to eight feet in height, we could add to that, maintain six-foot buffer. Landscaped, in, in six-foot buffer, maintain six-foot landscape buffer along rear property line, install arborvitae in that area, okay? Does that sound right?
Yes.
Six-foot buffer.
No. Ken, what are your thoughts, Ken?
My only concern with that is, although that would be nice to have the six-foot wide buffer, I'm just thinking, would it affect the turning to get in and out of the spots? Although it shouldn't, it shouldn't because the way it's, it's written, the way it's drawn right now, we're not moving that end of the spot, so, so I, I think it's good with the six-foot buffer. Sorry.
And I also think, Michelle, you should add in cedar fence.
Okay, so it'll say install cedar privacy fencing.
Right.
That was six. Yeah, but right now, the turning aisle is deficient by four feet.
The turning aisle.
Right, so that's the width between the parking spot, the back of the parking spot and the building. That area is only twenty.
That's why I was thinking if we do reduce, if we increase the buffer to six feet, we, we'd help them, the drive, you know, it's a trade-off.
If you reduce the length of the parking spaces, you could gain that additional access, or you could add it to the front of the buffer. So it's up to you.
Yeah. Make, make it a four-foot buffer, four-and-a-half foot buffer, split the difference. Four-and-a-half? Four foot, yeah.
Okay, so it'll say maintain four-foot landscape buffer, plant and maintain arborvitae along the rear property line. And then it'll say which grows six to eight feet in height. Okay, so we're going to see a revised site plan that incorporates these things anyway. And the only other thing, and I didn't mention this as a condition because I'm not sure if anyone was interested in either reducing the number of bedrooms or any changes to the floor plans or requiring any modifications, whether that be to the dormers or the size of the units or any of that. That came up as, as commentary, I think, so. And some of the public comment.
I mean, the, the sense that I'm hearing, I, I personally think the, the proposed increase is egregious. Over seventeen thousand square feet on an eighty-eight-hundred-square-foot lot. For, for the living area, we're going from thirty-seven-hundred square feet, which is already huge, to over five thousand square feet, over fifty-four-hundred square feet. I, I think that's enormous. I, I also find little comfort in that it's condo, that it's, people think that there's, there's going to be some safety in condos. I've seen too many times in my own neighborhood where it's great that it's condos until they rent them out. The people move out and they rent them out, and then all of a sudden, you have multiple people in there, multiple cars, all kinds, all kinds of problems from that end. That's, that's what I've seen in the past. So I find a little comfort in saying that homeownership is the way to go and that that's going to solve these other problems because it only solves it until they decide to rent it. So, and those are my thoughts on it, but, you know, it seems like there's a sense that folks don't have a problem with it. So, Michelle, I mean, whatever, whatever you're looking for. Ken, were you finished?
Yes.
Eric Henry.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Michelle, you said we were going to see a, we're going to see a revised site plan anyway?
Well, they're going to need to submit that. That's condition three, submit a revised site plan. You won't see it unless you, you know, come in and ask to see it, but unless you were going to, unless you want to see it before you make a decision, then I would recommend you table this until you see it.
And in that revision of the site plan, would it also, we can stipulate that it include the revised, the, the correct landscaping plan? I'm, I'm not a big proponent of, of passing proposals that the plans are not complete. So, will it, we also see a, can we also stipulate, we see the, do we have to overtly stipulate that we see the, the landscaping plan in this as well?
Well, right now, the condition reads, "Landscape the site in accordance with the plan, subject to the reasonable, the reasonable approval of the ward city councilor." So right now, you're not going to see it. If you pass, if you grant a special permit subject to these conditions, you won't have seen it before you voted. If you want to see the revised site plan or you want to see the landscaping plan, I would recommend you table this. Allow the petitioner to produce those, come back, and then you will see them and then make a decision that would incorporate those in.
Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone? Patrick Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I still think we need to resolve the issue of the parking spaces and which of the alternate plans. I suggest that we go with D, which is what the petitioner stated they would be amenable to. It would provide an additional two, two spaces of parking without creating a violation in open space, which would address, I believe, the sole opposition was the parking in that neighborhood. It would provide additional relief on the property. So that's why I would be in support of this if we were to require the eight parking spaces. I completely understand the concern of the chairman with regards to the overuse of this proposal. While it's not seeking to convert it to a four-family, in keeping it with three, it's only about five hundred square feet less of living space with an additional bedroom, more than what it was proposed the last time. So I don't see much of a difference, but I supported the prior plan because, again, the property needs to be rehabilitated in the best interest of the, of the neighborhood. From what I hear about the current layout of it, it's not workable, so something needs to be done. Thank you.
Very good. Ken Antinucci.
I'd support Patrick's recommendation to adopt D as the option.
So, right, so if you're going to look at three D, which is install eight parking spaces on site, six as per plan and two in the garage location, garage, you'll say garage must be demolished, you no longer would need condition four. So we would eliminate four. And the others would get renumbered.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No? Is there a motion? Patrick Fitzgerald.
I'd make a motion to approve the request with the amended conditions as stated by the city planner.
Patrick's made a motion to approve the petition with the conditions that we've outlined. Ken Antinucci.
I'll second.
And those were ten conditions, a total of ten, as amended.
Ken Antinucci seconds. And for the public's notification, Charles Ferguson and James Chivelli will not be voting on this hearing. Okay. Let's see, go ahead, Michelle.
Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Tawadich Kebresalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
No.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Chuck Ayoven?
No.
So seven to two, that was granted.
Okay, granted with conditions. Thank you very much. Okay, next hearing, next public meeting we will have will be the tentative approval of preliminary plans of a subdivision subdivision control law involving one hundred Hospital Road and fifty-seven Hospital Road. Ken, if you could read the notice, please.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public meeting in the auditorium on the first floor of the John and Christina Markey Malden Senior Community Center, Seven Washington Street, Malden, Mass. at seven PM on Wednesday, October tenth, two thousand and eighteen, regarding two applications of Melrose Wakefield Healthcare, Inc., formerly known as Hallmark Health System, Inc., made under the rules and regulations of the Malden Planning Board governing the subdivision of land and Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one S, for tentative approval of a preliminary plan, namely, one, one application to subdivide approximately nine point six acres, approximately four hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy square feet of currently developed land to create five new parcels, one new roadway off of Murray Hill Road and one new roadway off Hospital Road at the property known as and numbered one hundred Hospital Road, Malden, Mass. And also known by City of Malden Assessor's parcel identification number zero-two-five, one-zero-four, four-zero-one. And two, one application to subdivide approximately five acres, approximately two hundred and eighteen thousand and ninety-five square feet of currently developed land to create five new parcels and two new roadways off Hospital Road at the property known as and numbered fifty-seven Hospital Road, Malden, Mass. And also known by City of Malden Assessor's parcel identification number zero-two-five, one-zero-five, five-zero-one.
Thank you, Ken. Michelle, can you bring us up to speed, please?
So this is a public meeting, so you're going to discuss and review these applications at a public meeting? It's not a public hearing. Public hearing's not required. Your consideration deliberation and decision must be at a public meeting. So abutters were not notified. We did post the notice of the meeting with the city clerk. And you will not receive any public testimony. You are allowed to receive test, comments from other city departments, which we'll get to. The applicant, as you heard, is Melrose Wakefield Healthcare, Inc. Two separate applications were filed, the application for tentative approval of a preliminary plan. And you have, so you have two sets of plans and two applications. One is for hundred, one hundred Hospital Road, which on the sheets is known as West Subdivision. And then you also have a plan, a set of plans for fifty-seven Hospital Road, which is known as the East Subdivision. Previously, in March thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, September thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, March fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, this board disapproved similar applications for tentative approval of preliminary plan filed by the same applicant. The subdivision control law does not prohibit the filing of repetitive or multiple applications. So you're seeing another application before you. The plans that were filed with these current applications appear to be identical to those plans that were filed with the most recent prior applications, filed February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and disapproved on March fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. There are two different sets of applicable rules and ordinances. One of the rules and regulations of the Malden Planning Board governing the subdivision of land. Those were adopted September twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-two, and revised most recently April thirteenth, two thousand eleven. That is known as a local subdivision control law. They incorporate Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-one A, Section eighty-one, for the most part. And you also are looking at Chapter twelve of our revised ordinances of nineteen ninety-one of the City of Malden, which are the zoning ordinances. Specifically, you're looking at two sections of the zoning ordinance when you're looking at these plans. One has to do with frontage, the other has to do with lot area. The submission of the preliminary plan freezes for all land shown on the plan, the zoning in effect at the time of submittal if a definitive plan is submitted within seven months and if the definitive plan is approved. The zoning freeze would be for eight years from the date of endorsement of the approved plan. And that's in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six. So with these current applications, the applicant also filed a waiver of those provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, regarding rights that had vested with the most recent previous applications that were disapproved in March. So when they had filed those applications back in February and those were disapproved in March, certain rights potentially were vested, freezing the zoning as of that date. They waived that provision when they filed, they waived those potential protections when they filed these plans. So the freeze would begin, if it's applicable, if they file a definitive plan within seven months and it's approved, the zoning freeze would begin, would be in effect frozen as of the date they filed these plans. So these were filed on August twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen. The construction use and occupancy of any building or structure on the land depicted on the plans would be subject to the zoning ordinance. Again, you're reviewing this under subdivision control law, so you're considering lot area and frontage requirements. So when you look at the second page of the plans and you see certain footprints laid out, et cetera, that's really for reference only, for illustration. You're not approving, if you were to approve this plan, those house layouts or those sizes or anything like that. You're specifically looking at the new lots that are being created, so the lot size and the frontage. I also want to note for the record, with a prior application back in July of two thousand seventeen, the applicant had requested comments on a proposed scope of traffic impact and access study for a definitive plan of subdivision that it intend, that was intended to be filed. The city never received information requested regarding the proposal to determine the scope, and the city did not return comments or finalize the scope. They never filed a definitive plan either. The applicant has not provided requested information to date, nor has renewed the request. I have details of those, that discussion about traffic scoping if anyone's interested. In terms of the subject of the preliminary plan, you're looking at two different parcels. You have the west side and you have on the, the west subdivision and the east subdivision. Collectively, I'm referring to these as the applications and the plans and the subject property. So the subject property contains a total of seven hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred eighty-nine square feet, comprised of six hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred fifty-three square feet in Malden, so that's eighty-three percent in Malden, and one hundred thirty thousand, thirty-six square feet in Medford, so seventeen percent of the land is in Medford. And again, that's combining both the parcels. The one hundred Hospital Road parcel, the existing parcel is approximately four hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred seventy square feet. That's contiguous with site land to the west located in Medford, which is the hundred thirty thousand, thirty-six square feet. So that hundred Hospital Road parcel is approximately nine point five acres. In Malden total, it's twelve point, approximately twelve point five seven acres. Five hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred six square feet total, Malden and Medford. It's located on the western side of Hospital Road in Savin Street in Malden, the northern side of Murray Hill Road in Malden and Medford, the eastern side of Grover Road in Mal, Medford, and the southern side of Gerard Road in Malden. It's currently the developed site of a vacant building that was formerly used as the Malden Hospital. That's a six-story building, approximately two hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred three square feet of gross floor area and various paved parking lots. The proposed subdivision plan would create five new parcels and two roadways. One off Murray Hill Road, that's proposed to be known as Rose Street, and one off Hospital Road, proposed to be known as Amber Street. Road, proposed to be known as Amber Street. In terms of the breakdown of how the subdivision plan is creating these new parcels and roadways, you have Lot 1, which has a proposed lot area of 496,330 square feet in Malden and Medford, which is comprised of 366,294 square feet in Malden only. You have frontage, um, that's existing, 191.92 feet of frontage on Gerard Road, 865.82 feet on Hospital Road, 275.96 feet on Savin Street, 40.49 feet on Murray Hill Road in Malden, and 75.84 on Murray Hill Road in Medford, and 942.11 feet on Grover Road in Medford. The plan proposes to create new frontage on Rose Street and Amber Street, that would be 31.67 feet on Rose Street and 77.25 feet on Amber Street. I will note that it may not qualify as frontage per our definition, but I'm letting you know that that is length along a proposed new roadway. You also have proposed Lot 2 with 8,751 square feet and 73.1 feet of frontage on Rose Street. Lot 3, 8,751 square feet with 57.32 feet on Rose, of frontage on Rose Street. Lot 4, 8,751 square feet with 50.25 feet of frontage on Amber Street. And Lot 5, 11,982 square feet, which currently has frontage on Murray Hill Road, 81.95 feet, and 117.88 feet on Hospital Road. It's also proposed to have frontage on two new proposed streets, Rose Street and Amber Street, 98.25 feet on Rose Street and 118.28 feet on Amber Street. You also have new roadways shown on the plan that comprise approximately 12,941 square feet, approximately 260.34 feet of frontage on Rose Street, and approximately 245.78 feet of frontage on Amber Street. So again, we're talk, this, I've been talking about 100 Hospital Road, which again is known as, if you're looking at the plans, is known as West Subdivision. Proposed lots 2, 3, 4, and 5 have the minimum required lot area for a single-family dwelling under the current zoning ordinance. That is 8,750 square feet, because it's a subdivision of three or more. All the roadway I'm talking about is in Malden unless otherwise indicated it. I'm not sure of the frontage requirements at Medford, so I'm only speaking about frontage in Malden. And again, I will note, although I've called them frontage, some of that length may not be, may not qualify as frontage per the definition in our zoning ordinance. Then we move on to parcel 57 Hospital Road. Does anybody have questions about 100 Hospital Road? Is everybody fine with the plans following along? Okay, so 57 Hospital Road, the existing parcel is approximately five acres or 218,095 square feet. It is located on the eastern side of Hospital Road, the western side of West Border Road in Malden, and the northern side of Murray Hill Road in Wal, Malden. That is all in Malden. It's currently the developed site of two vacant buildings. One formerly used as the hospital powerhouse, which has two stories and 15,426 square feet of gross floor area, and one formerly used for the nursing school. That's three stories and 18,300 square feet of gross floor area. The proposed subdivision will create five new parcels and two new roadways off Hospital Road to be known as Cobalt Street and Coral Street. Again, I've given you a breakdown of what's shown on the plans. I'll read this out loud into the record. You have first, what's labeled, uh, you have the first Lot 1, which is actually a parcel. It doesn't meet the minimum requirements for a lot. It contains 4,237 square feet. It has two, 12.30, 12.3 feet of frontage along Hospital Road. It will have proposed new frontage on Cobalt Street, 101.64 feet, 125.34 feet on Coral Street. Lot 2, which is proposed to have a lot area of 8,751 square feet, has 106.12 feet along Hospital Road of frontage, and proposed to have 68.72 feet of frontage along Coral Street. Lot 3, 8,751 square feet, will, is proposed to have new frontage on Coral Street, 65.76 feet. Lot 4 is proposed to have a lot area of 8,751 square feet. The proposed new frontage on Cobalt Street is 81.92 feet. Lot 5 is going to have a lot area of 171,033 square feet. That currently has frontage along Murray Hill Road, 132.9 feet, along West Border Road, 887.35 feet, and along Hospital Road, 701.37, 701.37 feet. It will also have frontage along Cobalt Street, 78.80 feet, and along Coral Street, 91.57 feet. New roadways will comprise approximately 16,572 square feet, and they are proposed to provide 262.36 feet of frontage along Cobalt Street and 351.39 feet along Coral Street. Again, some of that roadway frontage or length along the roadway may not qualify as frontage per the definition of Malden zoning ordinance. However, the proposed lots 2, 3, and 4 on this plan for 57 Hospital Road do have the minimum required lot area for single-family dwelling under the current zoning ordinance. That's 8,750 square feet, again. I will note, for the record, West Border Road in Malden is a public way under the jurisdiction of the state, DCR, Departments of Conservation and Recreation. That's the former MDC. Also, finally, I will note, in terms of the subject property, certain aggregate features. So in addition to the existing buildings on the sites, the subject property contains undeveloped areas with large outcroppings of ledge, woods, and dense vegetation. It is characterized by steep topography and severe grade changes ranging from 100 feet to 150 feet and 80 feet to 125 feet. The physical character of the subject property creates development constraints and concerns affect the feasibility of residential development due to substantial alterations to grade that will be required and the amount of, and location of ledge that must be removed to provide safe access and utilities. Development will require petitions seeking various relief under the city's zoning ordinances to alter the grade and remove ledge under Section 713 of the zoning ordinance, and to address excessive grades of yard areas and heights of retaining walls under Section 417.8 of the Malden zoning ordinance. So that is a description of the two properties and the two proposed subdivisions that are before you. Does anybody have questions? If not, I will go into, do you have a question?
Well, I, I just want to just confirm that they've basically not changed the plans at all since our last review.
That is correct.
They haven't addressed any of the safety issues, the topography, the, uh, providing a detailed site plan, uh, for the build-out of, uh, the lots?
No.
Okay.
As we go through these design standards, you'll see that what they've proposed is identical. There are, however, a couple new changes in existing conditions that I want to point out.
Okay.
So that has changed.
Go ahead.
So in terms of design standards, we reviewed these plans in accordance with the design standards provided in your subdivision rules and regulations. So the first design standard we looked at were streets, and the general requirement is regarding connection to a public way. So the plans depict one proposed street system will connect directly to Murray Hill Road, excuse me, and Hospital Road, and one proposed street system will connect to Hospital Road, which may be accessed by Murray Hill Road or Savin Street. So the standard in your rules and regulations governing subdivision of land is under Section 5A1A. The street system of the subdivision must be connected at at least one point with a public way or existing private way, having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction for the needs of vehicular traffic. The grade of Murray Hill Road is 12.5%. That grossly exceeds the standards provided in your subdivision rules and regulations, Section 5A3A, and exceed, and exceeds the 10% grade requirement for adequate access of emergency vehicles in operation of fire apparatus. That's contained in the 527 Code of Mass. Reg., Sections 18.2.3.4.6.1, dash 18.2.3.4.6.3, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code. The Malden Fire Department has a major concern regarding this. This roadway does not have suitable grades and adequate construction for the needs of the vehicular traffic, which potentially, which could potentially use the land subdivided under the plans. The second standard we looked at has to do with the proposed future street system. The plans depict the proposed subdivisions would create a total of seven single-family dwelling-sized lots and four roadways. The proposed new roadways, Rose Street, Amber Street, Cobalt Street, and Coral Street, are 55 feet in width with sidewalks on both sides. They would be classified or may be classified as Class C, given inadequate water pressure, or Class D, given the steep and rocky character of the land. These streets serve land that may be tentatively or permanently designated for low-density residential use. That's in accordance with your rules and regulations governing subdivision of land under Section 5A1E, subsection 3. The new roadways and dwelling lots comprise only a small fraction of the southern portion of the subject property, namely, 98,238 square feet or 13% of the total, 766,589 square feet. So that's approximately 9% of 100 Hospital Road, or 51,176 square feet, and approximately 22% of 57 Hospital Road, or 47,062 square feet. So your rules and regulations under Section 5A1B provide where the subdivision submitted covers only part of the applicant's land, a sketch of the proposed future street system of the unsubmitted part shall be furnished, and the street system of the part submitted will be considered in light of the proposals for the part not submitted. There is no proposed future street system for the great majority of the subject property, 87% of it. The next design standard we looked at when reviewing these plans had to do with adequacy of access via existing adjacent streets. The first criteria has to do with safety. The plans depict primary access to the proposed subdivision is via Murray Hill Road. It is an existing but inadequately constructed street due to grade. Again, the grade of Murray Hill Road is 12.5%. Under your rules and regulations, Section 5G1, in order to ensure vehicular and pedestrian safety and access, the board will consider the adequacy of streets and ways adjacent to a providing access to a proposed subdivision. It is the board's intent that a proposed subdivision does not overly strain the capacity of existing or planned streets and ways so as to result in traffic congestion and safety problems or otherwise interfere with access. That is one of the provisions of your rules and regulations. The grade of the primary access to the proposed subdivision is Murray Hill Road, 12.5%. It exceeds the 10% requirement for adequate access of emergency vehicles in operation of fire apparatus. That's the 527 CMRI previously cited, Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code. Again, the Malden Fire Department has a major concern regarding this. Ways serving the proposed subdivisions are inadequate due to grade, which affects adequacy of emergency response, and no improvements are proposed to ensure safe and adequate access and travel. And then finally, another criteria we looked at had to do with fire safety, specifically street elevations and water service. The Malden Fire Department has a major concern there is insufficient water supply to conduct firefighting operations at the proposed subdivisions. Your rules and regulations, Section 5A2C, subsection 3, provide the planning board in its opinion must be given satisfactory assurance that the subdivision will be provided with adequate water surface for all reasonable purpose. Two, streets and utilities, water system, there's another standard in your rules and regulations that states, um, the water system must be of adequate capacity. That's Section 6B4B of your rules and regulations. The Malden Fire Department has a major concern that there is insufficient water supply to conduct firefighting operations at the proposed subdivisions. Finally, I want to draw, call your attention to current conditions and outstanding public safety concerns and health hazards. One, regarding 100 Hospital Road, we received correspondence dated July 27, 2018, from the Malden Fire Department regarding black mold problem inside the building. Because of this hazardous condition, the fire department members will not enter the building while conducting a fire detail. Two, regarding 57 Hospital Road, we received a copy of referral notice form 18-0222 from the Malden Fire Department regarding an unsafe condition at the property, an open and unsecured gate, and bricks falling off the front of the building. And finally, regarding the entire subject property, we received an email correspondence dated October 4th, 2018, from the building commissioner regarding vegetation overgrowth and brick facade deterioration. I'm going to read those into the record in a minute. The current conditions of the subject property include unresolved public safety concerns. Specifically, the fencing has not been secured and installed around the ongoing brick deterioration of 57 Hospital Road. At least it was not as of yesterday, I was there yesterday. And health hazards for fire department members, namely, the black mold problem at 100 Hospital Road is ongoing. So the proposed subdivisions to create seven residential house lots immediately adjacent to and/or in close proximity to the existing buildings on the subject property that are the subject of these concerns and hazards. So we have circulated the plans for review by the Board of Health, the City Engineer, the DPW, and the Fire Department. To date, we have not received comments from the Board of Health. We have received comments, um, I'll take this out of order, from the Fire Department first. I will read a letter dated October 3rd, and you have copies of this in your package, dated October 3rd, 2018, to the Malden Planning Board regarding the Hospital Road subdivision. The Malden Fire Department has two major concerns regarding the proposed Hospital Road subdivision. One, grade requirement of no more than 10% of required for adequate access of emergency vehicles in operation of fire apparatus. That's the 527 Code of Mass. Reg., Section 18.2.3.4.6.1, dash 18.2.3.4.6.3, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code, and two, insufficient water supply to conduct firefighting operations. That signed sincerely Kevin Halpin, Lieutenant, Fire Prevention. We also, um, received an email, well, should I, should I do all the Fire Department stuff first? Um, well, we received, okay, so we received an email, um, dated October 4th, 2018. It reads, "Please accept this email as my report of any enforcement or compliance activity that has been provided by this department for the properties of 57 and 1 Hospital, 100 Hospital Roads since March of 2018. A complaint was filed on the City of Malden C.Click fix application regarding overgrowth along the roads which border the properties. I contacted the facility manager for the property, and the overgrowth was cut back. I also recently visited the site with Lieutenant Kevin Halpin from the Malden Fire Department for the purpose of determining if the maintenance steamhouse building located at 57 Hospital Road was unsafe due to the deterioration of the brick facade at the front of the building. I determined that the building is not structurally unstable and that the deterioration was superficial. Lieutenant Halpin and I agreed that we would order the owner to remove any loose brick and extend the fencing across the front of this building to keep the public away from deteriorating brick. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns." Signed Nelson L. Miller, Jr., Building Commissioner, City of Malden. Also, you have a copy, um, of a memo that was sent to Hallmark Health. I received this from Lieutenant Kevin Halpin, um, and it's dated July 27th, 2018. It reads, "To whom it may concern, it has been brought to our attention that there is a considerable black mold problem inside the front lobby leading to the fire alarm panel. As you may know, black mold can be hazardous and have toxic effects on the human body. For this reason, the Malden Fire Department members will no longer enter the building while conducting a fire detail, as was done in the past. We will assume that the fire alarm panel will continue to be monitored by a central station, and our duties will only involve outside inspection of the building and perimeter. We would consider changing this policy if the black mold problem is dealt with and corrected." If you have any questions, please call the Malden Fire Prevention Office. And then you also have a copy of the referral notice form number 18-0222 from the Malden Fire Department regarding 57 Hospital Road. The remarks are unsafe condition at old steamhouse, gate is wide open, there are bricks coming off the front of the building. Corrective action is we'll have Hallmark Health, one, remove all loose bricks, two, secure gate back to closed position and lock it." As I said, as of yesterday, that was not done, and that goes, that is the report that goes, that was mentioned by the building commissioner. Then we also received a copy, I'm sorry, received a memo from the city engineer and the DPW director. Let me just find a copy of that, that we just received today. And that is dated October 10th, 2018. It's from Yem Lip, the city engineer, and Robert Knox, the DPW director. It was regarding revised Hospital Road subdivisions, preliminary plans 81618, review comments. For your reference, this was received after I finalized the staff report. We've received this late this afternoon, so the staff report doesn't reference this or incorporate any of this in. It reads, "Engineering and Department of Public Works have reviewed the above preliminary subdivision plans and offer the same comments as the previous submission. One, proponent shall provide adequate water supply for domestic and fire protection. Engineering recommends..." Engineering recommends service connections off of existing MWA water main on Hospital Road. Two proponents shall provide gravity sewer to all lots. Should a sewer pump be required, an individual grinder pump system for each lot shall be proposed. Two, provide, two, three, three, I'm sorry, provide two perk tests of existing subsoil layers to verify underground chamber design and detention basin. The proponent shall arrange with the City Engineer for scheduling of initial inspection of onsite soil investigation and testing. Provide stormwater design, including operation and maintenance manual for detention pond underground drainage chamber. Four, number five of one-hundred Hospital Drive subdivision shall include deed restriction to ensure maintenance. Lot number five of one-hundred Hospital Drive subdivision shall include deed restriction to ensure maintenance of detention basin and drainage pipes. Cost of maintenance and cost of drainage system replacement in the future shall be responsible of homeowner and/or Rose Street Association. Five, Coral Street Underground Drainage Chamber shall be located offsite and not within public right of way. It is recommended that Coral Street be a private street, otherwise. Six, Proposed Roads Shall Be No More Than Ten Percent Grade. Seven, This is not a complete review due to lack of existing survey plans, lack of subsoil information, lack of stormwater design reports, and lack of future plan of the existing hospital site. If you have any questions on the above comments or would like to discuss this further, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. So, we received that as well. Does anybody have questions?
Jim Chevelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just wondering if this board is privy to any testing that was done to determine this was mold?
I have not received that. I only received the documentation from the Fire Department.
Okay, anyone have anything else? Michelle, would you give us a recommendation then?
So the recommendation is to disapprove both applications for the following reasons. One, Failure to comply with the following rules and regulations of the Malden Planning Board governing the subdivision of land. One, Section 5A1A, Connection to Public Way. The proposed street systems are not connected with the public way with suitable grades and adequate construction for the needs of vehicular traffic. Two, Section 5A1B, Proposed Future Street System. There is no proposed future street system for the great majority of the subject property, eighty-seven percent. Three, Section 5G1, Adequacy of Access Via Existing Streets. Safety, Access to the Proposed Subdivisions and Ways Serving the Subdivision are inadequate due to grade. Four, Section 5A1C, Design of Streets and Subdivision. Given the noncompliance of the plan with the rules and regulations regarding connection to a public way, Section 5A1A, Proposed Future Street System, Section 5A1B, inadequacy of access via existing adjacent streets, Section V. Section 5G1, The proposed subdivisions do not ensure vehicular and pedestrian safety and adequate access, and will not provide safe vehicular travel. And five, Section 5A2C, Subsection 3, Street Elevations. The proposed subdivisions are not provided with adequate water service. In Section Five, Section 6B4B, Streets and Utilities, the proposed water system is not of adequate capacity for fire protection, and there's insufficient water supply to conduct firefighting operations at the proposed subdivisions. And, reason number two, given the outstanding public safety concerns and health hazards for fire department members at the subject property, the plans are contrary to the purpose and intent of the rules and regulations of the Malden Planning Board governing the subdivision of land, namely, to ensure orderly future development of land for the safety, health, and convenience of the general public and the future occupants of the subdivided land.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle?
And I did combine both of these in the staff report and, you know, in the here, in the meeting notice, but you should take two separate votes, one on each petition. You have two separate petitions before you. One is Hundred Hospital Road, and one is Fifty-seven Hospital Road.
Okay, if no one has any questions, of Ken Intenucci. No, I was just going to ask then, if no one has any questions, is there a motion for one-hundred Hospital Road? Ken Intenucci.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to disapprove the application for one-hundred Hospital Road.
Very good. Ken's made a motion to disapprove the application for one-hundred Hospital Road. Is there a second? Patrick Fitzgerald.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Let me try to get ahead of it. Okay, Michelle, any?
Ken Intenucci.
Yes.
A yes vote is to disapprove. Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Tawadig Gabrisalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Chuck Iovin?
Yes. So that.
That is one-hundred Hospital.
One-hundred Hospital Road has been disapproved. Is there a motion for fifty-seven Hospital Road? Eric Henry?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we disapprove the petition for fifty-seven, is it? I'm sorry, fifty-seven Hospital Road.
Very good. Eric's made a motion to disapprove fifty-seven Hospital Road. Tawadig Gabrisalasi?
I will second.
Tawadig second.
Ken Intenucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Tawadig Gabrisalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Chuck Iovin?
Yes. So that, that application has also been disapproved. Okay. Very good. The next item, Status Updates. Master Plan Steering Committee Status Update is, basically, we had a meeting last, last month where we are reviewing how we proceed next. The, the discussion has centered around whether we spend our efforts generating an energy efficiency chapter, or if we are going to, going to pursue other avenues and pursue other updates. Kind of reevaluating whether we, we look at some of the other areas, such as economic development, or housing, residence housing, transportation. So we're in the process of trying to evaluate that. Anything, Michelle?
Yeah, I was just going to add that because the energy chapter's not required in the master plan, and it can be included in the public facilities section, we thought that it would be, you know, better use of resources to focus on maybe updating one of the other chapters, as Chuck said. So we're looking at that, and we're meeting again on October twenty-ninth, the end of the month, and that's that.
And as, as we found, the city has actually done in various aspects and components of it, done quite a bit around energy efficiency. So it isn't that we're ignoring it just because it's not required. There has, there is a lot that has been done and is being done on an ongoing basis. It's just, I think we can have a better use of the resources and time, or what we're considering is a better use of resource and time, given the tasks ahead of us. Any questions? No? Ken, would you give us an update on community preservation, please? Clear it out a little? Okay.
Okay, well, we just continue to meet every two weeks. We're reviewing the applications and contacting the applicants through the administrator and the chair. And that's it. We plan on meeting again in two weeks. I believe it's the twenty-second. And we may have a second follow-up meeting on the twenty-third of October.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Ken? Eric McCush?
When you start, when you really see a goal of passing money out?
I don't know the exact number, but it's at least one, probably one-point-four million. And, you know, there's some matches that come from the state and everything. And we're looking to try and get through all these applications and review them within, we haven't set a time limit for it, but within the next couple of months. And then hopefully get some recommendations to the mayor's office and the city council. So, like to see something happen before fiscal nineteen is over, I believe. Fiscal nineteen, right? That always confuses me. So, by June.
Very good. Anything else? No? Michelle, can you give us a housing production plan update?
Yes, we did have the first meeting. I'm on the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee. We had the first meeting this past month. And there were also some focus groups that the administration ran with the consultant we're using, which is MAPC. Some of you may have been participating in those. And there will be, I believe there are two public forums that are going to be scheduled, so I will make sure I pass on the information to you about those. I don't know when those are going to be scheduled yet. But they're working on, I believe, gathering, you know, all the information. They're also going to be working on that land use analysis to determine the, what am I trying to say? The, it's a land use analysis for the purposes of determining whether we would qualify for safe harbor under forty-B. The gist of the housing production plan is to, my understanding, is to create affordable housing. And they're going to look at all types of housing in the city. And, but that is the way I understand, that's what the, the primary goal is. So we'll see if that production plan is formalized. It will need to be presented to the planning board for your review and approval, and to the city council for its review and approval. So you will be seeing that sooner or later. So, but again, I'll keep you up to date.
Did that take a turn at some point, Michelle? Because my understanding was it was a housing production plan, or more of a housing production inventory and plan?
Well, no, I mean.
As opposed to a plan for affordable housing?
No, I mean, I think the plan includes an inventory. I think you do an inventory as part of the plan. But the term housing production plan is, I think, defined, you know, I don't know if it's by the statute or what, but if we have a housing production plan in place and it specifies how much affordable housing we're going to create, that also creates a safe harbor, or, you know, a protection against forty-B. Keep in mind, you know, the forty-B, we're looking, we're still looking at the Census two-thousand numbers, so we are still technically, you know, we still exceed the ten percent. They won't redo that calculation again until the next census. But I think this plan will also possibly include recommendations for inclusionary housing or affordable housing ordinance, which we don't have. But that's my understanding of it. And I actually did have a handout that I was going to copy and bring to you. So I might email you that. That was the introduction I received as part of the committee, and it described all the different components to the plan and, and to the project. So I think I will plan to do that. I'll email that to everybody. So you'll see, see everything. I maybe I'm not explaining it exactly correctly. Yeah.
I don't know if the mic has to be on or not. But when you say safe harbor, and what does that mean?
The safe harbor, the way I understand it, means that we're exempt from what they call a forty-B project, an affordable housing project that would be exempt from our zoning. So it has to go through a review process. It would go to the Board of Appeal for a review process. It needs to comply with certain standards, but it would be exempt from zoning if it's allowed. So if we have a safe harbor, we have a protection. You know, if we meet the ten percent threshold, they couldn't file under that provision of the law. If we qualify by having a plan in place and we're meeting certain criteria with the plan, that would also be a safe harbor, a protection, or I would call it, I believe it's a type of exemption. And then the, the third way that we're looking at is this land use. Not remembering. It's a land use analysis where they look at all the different land uses and exempt out land that couldn't possibly be developed for housing, and they arrive at a percentage. If we meet a certain percentage of that, that can be used if there's a challenge. If somebody files under forty-B for housing, we can counter with this particular number. Unfortunately, the way I understand it is this number is really just for reference. Until we're actually challenged, the state then makes the official determination of the number. MAPC is going to give us a, an understanding of what the number is. Because the state has very specific criteria, how you come to this. And I think it's one-point-five percent.
When you say someone would file for forty-B?
File a project for an affordable housing project, say, I'm exempt from your zoning.
To circumvent our zoning, they could, if we don't have one of the.
One of those three, right?
They can just come in, and now they're bound by state guidelines instead of our own zoning ordinance.
Okay. And they could just come in and buy, well, it wouldn't be by right.
Well, it would be by right, and the zoning wouldn't apply.
Zoning wouldn't apply.
But they do still need to go through a review process.
So are there a lot of developers out there looking to build affordable housing? Twenty-five percent of the project would have to be affordable.
So, I mean, it's.
But I imagine the standards that they're held to are less than the ones we would hold them to. So with regard to things like density and.
Yeah, there are certain design criteria and impacts. You can require them to address impacts of the development, et cetera. But it, it's exempt from the zoning, the way I understand it, in the sense that, right, you know, multifamily housing is not allowed in Residence A. That wouldn't apply. They could propose a multifamily development in Residence A. Our zoning isn't going to restrict or regulate density, excuse me, parking, all our, you know, typical requirements.
But we are currently fairly well over ten percent, right?
We are over ten percent using the, the official numbers, yes.
Based on the most recent census.
That's correct.
It's not like we used to be, like when we used to be fifteen, sixteen percent.
Right, right.
Back when, because we had all the elderly housing, we had the veterans' housing, and we had other programs like that, Salem, Salem Towers, the different programs like that. At one point, we were, we were what I'd consider to be well over it. As we've developed and swapped out our industrial base for residential, residential market rates, we have eroded that. So the question will be, when two thousand twenty comes, do we have enough affordable, what they can now consider affordable housing as part of that function to?
But that's also, so we, we've lost a lot of the affordable housing through the, you know, loss of the.
No, we haven't lost the affordable housing. What we have is increased our overall base so that the number of affordable housing units has to grow to maintain that percentage.
Well, that, that was the second part of what I was saying. But you were saying, like, how we lost Salem Towers, we lost the veterans.
Salem Towers is still active. Salem Towers is a corner of.
Yeah, no, no, it was. But so what did you mean that we lost it? I thought you said we lost.
No, I said that was included in affordable housing.
Oh, okay.
All the elderly housing complexes that we have, the veterans' housing, the various.
And I mean, some of it still is included. It has to meet certain criteria.
Right, right.
You know?
But because the overall number of residents or rental units has increased so much, if we didn't.
Dwelings in the city.
Dwelings.
Housing units, right. Number of housing units, whether they're apartments or anything else. So I'll, I'm going to email that. I'm going to write myself a note to remember, to email you that. So you'll have an overview of what this project is and what the plan is. And then maybe we can discuss it more. I'll just email it to you, you know, for information only. I'll just email it to you, you know, for information only. Okay?
Okay. Complete Streets Task Force.
Complete Streets Task Force, I went to an update meeting, I think it was last week or, or last month. We have the prioritization plan in place, but apparently when we went to move forward to fund the projects, the estimates that we had received from the consultant we used were low. So, we thought we were going to be able to fund like eight projects. I think we can only fund like four, but we're still doing the top four on the list. So, that was good, but that was the update the mayor's office wanted to provide. Things cost a lot more. And if you look on the city website under boards and commissions, there's also a section called, I think it's advisory committees. You can see the complete streets prioritization plan. You can see the list of, I think it's, I don't know how many dozen projects, and you can read down the first four. Those are the projects that are being funded with this cycle. Open Space Recreation Plan Advisory Committee, that was a recommendation of the open space plan that is still being considered forming that by the city council. I did have one other update, which I'm not sure where the folder is, but we did receive the final, final approval from the state that the open space and recreation plan update is approved. So, we have the final official approval now. Previously, we had a preliminary approval, but, so that's good. The mayor's office was doing a lot of additional work on that to bring, you know, fill in some of the missing pieces we needed specifically, had to do with, I think, the accessibility evaluations of all the parks. So, I, they worked, I think, closely with the city engineer to get that done. So, that's good. And if that committee is formed, I will let you know. I don't know if they'll ask for somebody on the planning board to be on it or what. I think it's still just at the city council discussion level. Old and new business. I had one thing, I attached this to the agenda, you can just take it, I'll say, take it under advisement. It is correspondence we received from Jack Rivers. It's regarding Bowman Street and Constance Street floods. I was originally contacted about Mr. Rivers asking to appear before the planning board, and there's no matter, you know, scheduled for him to give public testimony. I advised him if there's a case that comes up in that area and he wants to testify, he certainly can, and suggested that he speak to the ward city councillor and the city engineer and the DPW to address drainage issues in that area. He sent an email to them. He also sent an email to us, and by us meaning the planning board, that details some of the concerns and some of the information he wanted you to have. Again, there's nothing currently pending before you, but I'm giving it to you because it was a correspondence addressed to you. So, you can take that home for review under advisement. That was also sent to the city engineer and, and I forwarded it to the ward councillor. I believe he is working with the city engineer to, you know, look into some of these issues.
Very good. Ken Antinucci?
Everybody, one, one other question. Wow, what's the status on the review and update of our ordinances? Wasn't there a committee looking at those?
The zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes, that, and that committee was put on hold when one of the staff people at MRA left, who was in charge of a lot of the administrative revisions. As you know, because I mentioned it last year, one of the, here, earlier this year, one of the public hearings we had on some zoning amendments, all those changes to the business and industrial use regs, those actually came out of that meeting as well, even though they formally didn't come out from the advisory committee. Those were proposed amendments, amendments that I had proposed, just really as brainstorming, that were moved forward by the chairman of ordinance. So, you have seen some things come out of that, even though you haven't officially seen a whole package of zoning revisions. But that committee is, it's not really a committee, that group is on hold. We haven't met in months. I think, like I said, we're waiting for MRA staffing. So...
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? No? Motion to adjourn?
Next meeting is November fourteenth.
Yes, next meeting will be November fourteenth. All in favor, say aye, aye. Motion carries. Very good. Happy Halloween.